Okay, seven o'clock, let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all. Alright. So, most people have been here before, but just a reminder, the exits are over here and then when you came in at, there is a generator in case we need a generator. We'll be holding the meeting tonight in accordance with the rules of procedures adopted by this board on January 20th of 2021. And item up is approval of the previous board minutes. Everybody get changed for review? Anybody have any comments? Do I have motion to approve the minutes? So moved by Doug, seconded by Aaron. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. One extension. The legal notices for tonight's meeting were published on November 24th of 2021. So, the way we do this is we'll go through the agenda as it's printed. We'll have the applicants come up tell us a little bit about what they're doing. And then we turn it over to staff in a public hearing if you get public comments up here and online. And then we'll go forward comments. So first item up. PB 1201-21 Preliminary Four-Lot Subdivision. John P. Morrell, square executor for Vivian Merlin. Okay, who's here to speak for that one? We have someone online for that one. Do we have someone online for Four-Lot Subdivision?
I don't see anybody coming off the news for something like that.
Yeah, let's just skip it, we'll come back to it. It's public hearing, so if you're here for, is anyone here specifically for that one? Did you?
I am as well.
Okay, do we have anyone to present it or are you, you're a neighbor?
I'm a neighbor.
Neighbor, okay. Alright. Yes, and I assume you online, you're a neighbor as well?
Yeah, I'm a neighbor.
Yes, I am.
So we had three people here for that one, so. What do you think, Ron? You're the expert in all the procedure.
Well, this is a public hearing.
Right.
Normally, if you have a presentation.
Yep.
What is being proposed by the applicant or its engineer.
Right.
Since we don't have that tonight, I'm not comfortable speaking on their behalf. I would suggest that we continue the meeting and come back to this once responsible for reading.
Right.
Surveying comes on board.
Okay, so that's what we'll do, we'll just kind of push it up, we'll go through some other applications right now and then we'll come back to this. And certainly in between each one, we'll check to see if anybody comes online for that one, okay? So that's the process we're going to use for tonight. But we will get your comments either way, even if nobody ever shows up, we'll get your comments on the record for that application. Next item up then is the final site plan for Gerstner Medical, PB 1103-21. Do I have anyone here to present that?
Good evening, Alex Amring with Costage.
Hey, how you doing?
Good.
Hey, tell us a little bit about the final site plan, what's changed, what we need to know and I'll turn it over to staff.
I'll keep it short tonight, we were obviously before the board two weeks ago. At that time, we received approval of the architectural package. That step obviously allowed town staff to sign off on the preliminary site plan drawings. Which obviously allows us now to come before you for the final application. Only changes to the drawings were a number of items which were previously included in the conditions. So we got those down to two conditions. Which I'll kind of jump ahead and say we've reviewed and have no issues with, so.
Okay, alright.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Yeah, we, we look at the final site plan drawings. They hadn't changed the four inch water line to the building, which I pointed out to Alex and he's going to make that change. That's a condition of final approval. The other one is that there were some things in the MRB letter. November 12th was it, Vince?
Yes, yes.
That he's going to address before land signs up. Other than that, I believe they're ready to go with final approvals for this project.
Great. And I agree with Ron, everything seemed to be presented to you guys two weeks ago when we talked about elevations. Elevation drawings have been submitted and actually just waiting on your signature, but I'm assuming you can do that after the meeting.
Yep.
And I think we're ready to go forward.
Okay, anyway. Engineering.
Yes, as previously mentioned, they're working toward addressing November 12th meeting. And the plans need to shut the four inch warning and then we'll be good to go. So I don't have any objections to the board going forward to have a time.
Good. Okay, or Doug?
No, I don't have anything on this one.
Adrian?
I'm awesome.
Okay, I am as well, so what we have before us is a resolution that the evidence said he's okay with the two conditions. Do I have a motion to wait and reading and approve the final site plan with conditions? Moved by Adrian, seconded by Aaron. Aaron, any other comments? Quick, take a roll call both please.
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney.
Aye.
Adrian Dallas.
Aye.
Aye, okay, you got it Alex, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now I'll sign that elevation tonight. Okay, next item up PB 0802, the preliminary site plan approval for lot R2. Jim, and your team, tell us what we're doing on that one and then we'll get into the three lot subdivision after that. So we'll start with the preliminary site plan.
Great, hey everybody, Matt Thomas from Marathon, sorry for my voice, I was doing good until I started yelling. Learned a basketball practice for twelve year olds yesterday, so never recovered too well from that. Dan, can I? Give you the privileges over there.
Sure.
Sure, so preliminary site plan, we're back, obviously the board has seen us several times here before. And we've really knocked off a lot of the conditions from the different pigling resolutions and different pieces. Last time we were here, the architect was here to provide information on the materials, which I brought that forward again in case anyone hadn't seen it earlier, it was other discussion from the board, I'm not sure if Tim's online, I think he was going to try to.
No, Tim's not going to make it tonight.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah. But if he is, then that's great. So if there's any questions on that, I'm more than happy to chat with him or turn it over to Tim if he's online. From a site plan perspective, if I can just share the plans real quick, the only condition.
If you could just flip over to the zoom side of it to share the screen.
There was a condition relative to the fence and I had added. I had added that fence to the plan, but it may not have been real apparent. But that's essentially right on the property line.
Right.
Between the Burger King and there, and then I wanted to show the board the fence that we're proposing. We can of course revise this if it's needed, there was talk about solid fence, we are proposing to install some grasses or other plants along that border, we don't want to create a solid barrier there for safety to the ATM as far as being able to see through it. But there was also talk about some security and a barrier between that Burger King and the drive-through portion. So this is kind of what we're proposing, it's an aluminum, looks like wrought iron fence. A little bit of a security top, it's only four feet high, so I mean you can get over it if you try real hard, but it will slow you down a little bit in between, and again, that's the entirety of that sort of property lineup until you get out near the drive aisle entrance.
It will slow me down.
It will slow me down these days as well. Just a reminder for the board, we did add some additional landscaping, including some seasonal planting beds around the entrances, additional trees along that north property line to the plaza, which was some discussion item last time. And again, I think we're down to just some comments for the final drainage plan for the structure that I had worked with Colin and Lance on. And I do have amended elevations with the address and signature block on it, I just don't think there's any preliminary, so I'll have those with our final application or with the preliminary funds that come in for signature. And I think that's pretty much it, other than that, we've reviewed the conditions that were provided to us in the draft resolution and we're comfortable moving forward. The other piece for the board is the preliminary area plans that were submitted. We had the two core locations that were agreed to with the highway and other folks, those were performance. I'll have that report that comes in with a preliminary, there's four to six inches of asphalt. Six to eight inches of crushed stone, and then there's four to six inches of gravel and sand below it, so we're confident that that section is going to be sufficient. And what we're probably going to do is resurface at a minimum proportion through this area here. Depending on, you know, what it looks like when we get done with the curving work out there, we made miller tops depending on the condition, so.
Okay.
But that report will come first after review.
Perfect, okay, Ron?
Well, first of all, Jim, I'd like to thank you for taking time to share it out in need of us to look at some of the existing conditions and find solutions to those. Jim has sent a letter, I think to Dan.
Yep.
I'll let Dan elaborate on that. Also, very happy to see that we are addressing the sidewalk connection to 396. This time, that's excellent. And Jim, just so everybody knows, we all got to experience firsthand how fast people fly through that area. Jim came up with a couple of ideas, your octagonal red signs say SPOB on. We're going to try to calm that down a little bit again, which is great.
I'm with it.
Yeah, we are having stop patrol, Ron's point, at that intersection there as well as at the other end where it comes down here there. We want to avoid the speed bumps as we discussed with you guys, but intersections controlled will help.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Jim. And I did see that you were working on the, the edges of the road today, I don't know how far you got, but I knew that I was over there and you started, they were starting it, so, yeah, they started today, so I just they were taking about three, four days, I'll tell you. And in fact, they were coming right along. Okay, Dan?
Yeah, as Ron mentioned, we did have an onsite meeting discussing the current plaza, the current Burger King site and the road in between those two. As boards aware, I showed you some pictures at the last meeting during high report at the end. And I think that we have a good plan in place. Depending on direction of the board, we'll see if you guys want that in a resolution or something, but okay. Right now, I think we're in a good spot with the whole project. Preliminary, I'm pretty confident moving forward at this point.
Okay, cool.
I, again, I'm also happy to see that the area back there, the stop sign is going in. I haven't been able to know or see where the definition of a stop sign is, but they do seem to work very well, slow down and go.
Okay, slow down and go is better than what they do. Engineering.
MRB group did issue a letter, November 2nd, they did five, five plans. All of our preliminary comments have been addressed, I have no questions for them.
Okay, cool. Alright, this is the preliminary site plan, we'll start with Aaron.
I have nothing for the preliminary.
Okay. Adrian?
No, I'm pleased with everything that's going on in the plaza owner, you know, doing what he has to do to help out too. Spending a long time and make everything look nice and harmonious, and so, thank you and I'm good.
I agree. The only thing I wanted to add is to make sure you guys understand, when we come to the final site plan, we're going to request that the list of condition or list of items be added as a condition that those be completed prior to CMO of the bank. Which gives you more than enough time, I think, to complete them, you're already doing half of them. So I just thought we, I'd tell you that ahead of time, so you don't see that and it's sometimes it's a shock, so. Okay, does that make sense?
I just read the letter.
Yes, exactly, yeah, yeah, the ones that you concluded. Okay, so with that, we have the preliminary site plan resolution. So do I have, you have agreed to the conditions, so do I have someone to move, wait for reading and move the resolution with condition? For the preliminary site plan. Moved by Adrian, seconded by?
Don.
Don. He's closer to me, I can hear him.
I think you couldn't hear me.
Yeah, that's my good friend Adrian. Anyone have any other comments? Quick, take a roll call both please.
Avis.
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney.
Aye.
Adrian Dallas.
Aye.
And Hunter.
Aye, okay, so next item up is the preliminary, or I'm sorry, the final re-subdivision. And I don't think there's too many additional items on that one.
No, I think we said final.
I think so, so I'll just run through staff real quick, Ron, anything on it?
Reso, reso, yeah, that's resolution, it's all good to go, Ron did a nice job on the board on the, everything's been addressed.
Cool, okay. Highway, engineering?
I'm all good.
Anybody on the board have anything on the subdivision?
I, I do.
Okay.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll just reiterate what, what I said, just having the work on, on the existing plaza before the, the CMO can be issued for the bidding.
Sure, I'll give you a timing update now, if you were talking about the work on edge of the road is started, we've got the, we had an RFP, a contract to come out a week ago, right before holiday. So we're expecting this pricing back, do the work on the backside. I've called Granos, there's a dumpster at the one end of the property, I've called Waste Management out for three weeks. And I gave them an ultimatum that if you don't get out of by then, we will enough, throw things wherever I got to throw. So he understands that and so the RFP we're asking for the contract to do is do the back of the plaza, we changed that to the, just like I'm giving that glass and make it all solid for code. And they're also going to look at the garbage dumpster, we're out changing that around as well, so we got a couple different options. Once we get that pulled together, which I'm expecting that pricing this week. Because you know, during the holiday, we prayed for the holiday when we got together, stupid gone. So hopefully, by the end of the week, we will have an answer on pricing and then we'll put a contract in place. My hope is I'm going to have it done before we even get to fine.
Cool, alright, appreciate it. Anything else?
That's, that's all.
That's okay, anything else, okay, so we have a resolution with a couple of basic conditions. Do I have a motion to wait and reading and approve the resolution for the final re-subdivision flat application?
Think they're okay with it?
They said they were okay with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, a few little administrative items on. Okay, do I have someone to move it?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Aaron, seconded by? Alright, let's take a roll call both please.
Avis.
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney.
Aye.
Adrian Dallas.
Aye.
Alright, okay, good to go guys, appreciate it very much. Okay, did we ever get anybody online to address the Four-Lot Subdivision for the Merlin estate?
You have Mike Green from Brandon's office, Mike did a talk on it. It is Mike Spodnible, but it's the land surveyor, but Mike is, he works there, so. Mike, are you able to speak?
Mike Green, yeah, I'm here as that for the one on.
Rushmore.
What's the road name?
Yeah, the Four-Lot Subdivision of Rushmore Road.
Yes, yeah, that's us.
Okay, can you tell me a little, can you just kind of go over a little bit about it, we've got a few neighbors that want to hear about it and to tell us what you're doing there and then you both turn it over to staff.
Alright, so we're trying to make best use of that property out there as far as doing some new house construction or looking to create three, three new lots, all on pretty large lots. One existing house that, that's already there and we're creating a new lot for it. I guess you, if you're looking at the map, you'll see the, the one lot kind of in the middle has a existing pond on it and we made the property line follow sort of a ditch or creek down through the middle of it. Should be a real nice spot for a couple houses.
Okay. Okay, we'll turn it over to Ron.
Yeah, Mike, the lot line has been adjusted around that pond, so it's not splitting the pond into two property owners.
Yeah, we, we made that adjustment already, it just was Dawn and Anne sent in as a PDF, you probably don't have the newspaper copies.
We do, I'm just correcting what you said. The other thing was the lot number one, we talked with Mike and he said some more depth.
Yeah, we already started on those changes, I haven't had a chance to send it in yet, but we, we have no problem making that adjustment.
That, the other three lots that are being proposed, are being proposed at this time as non-buildable lots, meaning before anything can happen on those lots, there has to be site plans prepared.
I think I may have put that note on there already.
Did, Mike, for the benefit of the people here in the audience that don't have that map displayed for now, I just want to make sure that they understand that we're not talking about proving lots and then having houses below them. There's a second step that's involved here, the planning board is involved with the location of the driveways, the location of the septic fields and drainage and all of those other related development issues, so.
Yeah, and for the record, we haven't been approached by any, anyone to do that ahead of time. I think they're going to market these lots and let each individual person handle that one lot at a time.
Right, and who knows, one of those lots may end up as part of a farm operation.
Yeah, and it could, that way they're not spending that upfront and then having it turn into, back into farmland.
Yep, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
For the record.
Alright, anything else?
We drafted a resolution.
Yep, yeah, we were the speaker and, and resolution for approval of preliminary subdivision. Yep. Okay, with conditions. Okay, Dan?
Yeah, you'll notice these lots, there's two of those that have a road front, 240. But the main part of the lots are at the 300, so for code that is compliant, the lot whip at this time, but what Ron said, these are non-buildable lots until you guys get cycling, so. Again, we're drawing lines on a map, but we are making them all compliant.
Correct, and I think you used the right word, at this time. Because if the code changes and it changes to a different width, then whoever buys them will have some issues, so we'll we'll have to look at that at the time, but, okay, any other can? Highway?
I have nothing.
Engineering?
I have nothing.
Okay, this is a public hearing, do I have anyone here to speak for or against this application? We'll start in the room here, I have a couple neighbors, do you have anything to add or questions about the project?
Well, we were just concerned, we live right across, and of course, we live in that district for a reason. We don't know whether they're going to sell lots or take the lots out to somebody and they're going to put three or four houses in there and we go to different communities, you know.
I think the answer is they can't, well, I guess they could, I mean, as long as they maintain the lot sizes within any form.
Right, at, at this time, I think you should only see three other houses, I mean, one lot already has a house on it.
That's the one that separated.
Right. Yes, yes. So you're only making three other lots that would be able to be buildable if they come in front of the board and get cycling for it. Right now, they're not, you know, why was it going to be put on those ten acre lots?
Well, the, the, that's what I'm saying. Minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet. So, divided that, that's roughly two acres into a 10 acre lot that's by potential. But then you've got to deal with drainage, you've got to deal with the right of ways for streets. So a lot of issues that gets them complicated.
You need road frontage, so right now, we're going down to the minimal road frontage for these lots.
So they subdivided it more, by adding more lots, they would technically need grants, it's right in order to accomplish that.
Yeah, and it would be a lot of other hurdles. Hurdles and public hearings and opportunities for the public to speak on that. At this point, they're only going down to three lots, so again, if they, if they come in front of the planning board, they can cement for a change of from non-buildable to buildable lots. And most at the moment would be three homes without coming back in front of the public hearing.
The one person lot that was you saying?
Yeah.
Roughly, now, do not misinterpret that, we're not saying they can only put one house by a 10 acre lot.
Well, you, you say you put five.
Erratically, erratically.
That's just theory, depending on how they lay it out and the street that they put in and all.
But you had some topography to deal with there, that you don't know?
Yep.
That's going to be difficult to stabilize if you begin building in a road or any kind of lengthy driveways, so. I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying it's not automatic.
Yeah, okay, come back to us for that, as you knew, you want to be informed to have another sign up and go through that, Ron's name.
Say your name, please.
Wayne McFlure, 5106 Rushmore. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, appreciate that input, did you have a question, sir?
No, I, it's sort of, it's sort of about two buildings, I mean, I just grabbed out some of the buildings, popular townhouses back there, you know, actually they only got 20 20 places.
I don't think that Mollie Family, you have to look at the code, a Mollie Family, which is townhouse, wouldn't necessarily fit into that area.
Well, it's all agricultural, so doesn't it pretty much open it up to anything?
No, doesn't really. And there's some specific guidelines.
It goes to the agricultural area in Iowa and, yeah, they changed that one.
Yeah. Yeah. Name and address. Yeah, name and address, I'm sorry.
James Land, 560 Rushmore.
Okay, let's, I know we have one person online that would like to make a comment, can you state your name and address and your question or comment, please?
This is Kim Bransley, address 5124 Rushmore Road. I'm a neighbor who lives right across all of the lots. And I guess I'm wondering if there's been given any consideration for the fact that even with three houses, that's a really sharp increase in population density for this road. And I'm wondering how that fits with the comprehensive plan of Farmington. My understanding was that north of the thruway wouldn't be as developed as south of the thruway. And it's an agricultural road and given the amount of population currently on the road, three homes is a huge and dramatic change for the road. So I'm wondering about considerations given to that and how it fits into the larger plan for Farmington.
I'll let Ron Grant answer that, when he is Mr. Conference of Plans.
Well, the zoning regulations are restrictive to the agricultural district in that they require 80,000 square foot lot minimums. And in order to show that, you've got to justify septic systems that will function on the site and the lot that you've got in mind. Three individual lots, three homes along the highway. In my professional opinion, is not for a major. in my professional opinion, does not warrant major impact on track. The number of trips from a residential single-family home is significantly less than those with apartments or townhouses or other kinds of activities. So as far as that goes, the comprehensive plan does want to protect the rural agricultural areas. We've had a lot of discussions with the Ag Advisory Committee on methods to address that. And so far, the Ag Advisory Committee has informed us that they're happy with keeping the A80 regulations that are in place. So we defer to the experts, the Ag Advisory Committee, and at this time, don't have any plans to change the zoning up there.
Right, and just for general comments, I've been doing this planning or zoning for 24 years now, and I honestly have never heard anybody even bring up the topic of changing the A80 to something larger for the agricultural lots. They all have, everything north of the thruway and actually east of kind of road eight, they don't have sewer, so they have some very restrictive issues with how big of a piece of, how big of a dwelling can go, or, I'm sorry, how big the lots have to be per dwelling, so we certainly have since 72 or four, whatever the first comprehensive plan came out, have certainly pushed the higher density development to the southwest quadrant or quarter, 20% of the town into that area, so like we just said, the expectation would be maybe that there could be a total of three additional dwellings, but as we said, being in an A80 district, if they came up with a really creative way that they could get within the guidelines and get variances or whatever, they could build some additional that in there, but they would all be single-family dwellings on 80,000 square foot lots. Lance has got it covered here. Lance?
Yeah, just to reiterate again, I mean, it's important just to make sure everybody's aware, this is a subdivision of land, we're not talking site plan yet. It would ultimately, before any construction or any approvals, be required in subject to come back through a review, at which point this board would conduct an environmental review through the process, which does take a look at traffic, visual impacts, possibly coordination, all depends on the type of action that comes before you. Those things all have to get weighed out as part of any site plan review that would be done. At this point, we don't have any of that information, so it's all hypothetical really to discuss.
Right, and hopefully everybody online heard that, because it's important. What we're going to do tonight is approve a type two seeker, which is very basic, but once a dwelling goes on there, then we get a little more detail with the environmental review and we get into much more detail and look at, and right now, all this is, is drawn basically lines on a map with this specific application. Once a proposed dwelling goes on the land, then we go through an entirely different process, look at many different items as it goes by there, so I just wanted to understand. Does anybody else online have any questions or comments, anybody else? Any follow-up questions or comments? Anyone here want any additional comments or?
No, I just I just noticed at the first step, there's a reason they're lying there, lying there because they want to put something.
They want to, they want to sell it and allow somebody to put something.
Right, so the next stage is to start to build.
I'd like to add one more point, ease the neighborhood. The two lots that are closest to the existing house, the width of the lot where the, it'll be wide enough to have the minimum setback of 300 feet, is going to be behind the rear property lines of that house, so those new houses that get built are going to be quite a bit back off the road and I, you know, I think that the separation of homes and everything should be quite adequate when when it's completed.
Okay, Mike, thank you.
I don't want to overstate the opportunity that this presents for an existing farm operation to acquire lands that they could continue to use as part of their farming operation. So that doesn't necessarily mean that the only thing that can happen on any one of those lots is putting a house there.
Well, I think it's reasonable, assuming they're going to do that, and people who are renting or renting out of shelters, they have no interest in buying, and you rent? And it's a few acres, just a few acres, we rent our property. They don't want to buy my property.
He's just making obvious, you know, making sure everybody understands what the opportunities are out there. Okay, any other comments on this application before I turn it over to Stan or to the board? Okay, Doug? Adrian?
No, just a subdivision, I have nothing.
Aaron?
No, I do, I just would like to say that with this, with with this being subdivided, I've been I've been on the contract of planning board, this is the one I was about to come up about. So I I would like to push the fact that I I would be interested just in seeing this remain farmland, however it happens. That is something I'd like to keep. That's all.
Okay, thanks. Well, from a planning board standpoint, we can do whatever the applicants bring to us and we'll go from there. So my comments, I mean, are that this is the step, this is the first step, and then we'll see what happens next. Once they begin to sell the lots off and we go through the process. So the the next item up is we have a resolution for seeker type two classification, which is the it's a type two. Do I have someone to move the resolution and, did I? Moved by Adrian, seconded by? I'm sorry, I'm not. And we have to close the public hearing.
I moved and closed the public hearing.
Do I have a second to close the public hearing? Moved and seconded, all papers to the public standing on. Public hearing's closed. You know, I thought about that as I was going through it and I go.
I moved and moved the seeker approval.
Okay, I have a motion, then a second? Aaron, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, both please. Okay, next up, Mike, we've got a preliminary subdivision flat application approval with conditions. Are you okay with the conditions or four conditions on it? You're okay with those conditions?
Yes, sir, no worries at all.
All right, we got the, can I get a waiver of the reading of it and approval with conditions for this application? Moved by Adrian, seconded by Doug. Any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, both please. Okay, thank you. Mike, we're in that next step, get paid to work in, we'll get paid in care, we'll go from there. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, next item up, we have the final two lot subdivision for Jim and Nancy Flanga. Who do I have online to talk about that one?
Me again.
Okay. Just going to give us a quick overview, but I think we're pretty familiar with it, so any any changes or anything we should know, Mike?
No, I believe there's just a one more edit we need to make concerning the flood flood map or something like that, and we'll send that right in.
Okay, Ron?
Good to go.
Dan? Highway engineering, everybody there, how about the board? Any comments on this one? Okay, so then what we do is, do I have a motion to approve with conditions the final two lots subdivision? Moved by Pete Green, seconded by Aaron. Okay, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, both please. Okay, next up is on the board action, seeker training. We're going to push that up to the next meeting. We've got nothing on the agenda, we'll do that. Pardon? Yeah, Mike, um, next item up is, I'm going to let Stan talk about the Figurales Hotel Hilltop. You guys didn't speak, and on the agenda till late, so who wants to talk about it?
There was apparently a typo instead of 69 units, there were 64, put in the resolution. Nobody, the applicant, the applicant's engineer, nobody caught it.
Eighty-four. Eighty-four instead of eighty-nine, yeah.
Okay, and and so when we got to the financing, they they noticed that there was a difference there and it had to be corrected, so this corrects that typo error.
We're not changing, I mean, we're having this real quick, not to change how many units are there now today when we approved it six months, whatever. It's the number that was there.
It was a clerical typo error, nobody caught it.
Anything else from staff, anything from the board?
Motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution, changing it from eight to eighty-nine.
Seconded by Aaron. Aaron, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, both please. All right, okay, that one's taken care of. Next up, we go to open discussion. Ron?
Mine would be very quick.
I like that.
Public hearing on the 14th by the town board on the comprehensive plan that has been presented to them from the committee. It's the first of two public hearings required in town lots. Following the first public hearing, any changes will be made to it, and we'll send it off to county planning in January for their review. The second thing is that the second draft of the solar legislation has been posted today on the website. Committee members received electronically the revised edits that the building department, all four code officers and fire marshals and piquantaries down there reviewed, and Lance, comments, and Don DeRose. And we think we're ready to maybe wrap this up on the day, I'm hoping. There's those that can go on to the town board, and that also goes to the county in January. So who's going to think I'm bothering or beginning of the year? Other than that, there are some items potentially coming up on the PRC agenda that you'll find interesting. One of them, I think, is going to be Auburn Junction. They're coming in with their 21,000 square foot plaza building and parking. The other one we think is going to be the submission of the incentive zoning for the Farming and Market Center project. I have had conversations with staff at county IDA this week, who are desperately looking for industrial buildings in town because, to use their words, Farmington is the hotspot, and that's where everybody wants to be. I said, that's great, I love hearing that. So we're going to probably hear more. Maybe we can get the Lewis Road Industrial Park hooked up with some of these and get that under.
You never know. That's it. Okay, Dan?
All right, so first off, the holiday gift department, the planning board is is opening on the next meeting night for project wise, but come January, we're already starting to fill that up, so take this opportunity, I know Ron's going to have some great training, I was able to sit and settle it when he talked for the zoning board of appeals, and it was very beneficial, so I believe that you guys are going to do some other things that night as well, but again, the training that he's going to talk about with seeker, it is some good stuff there. Otherwise, like I said, we got some party for your January meeting, January 5th, and as Ron said, PRC, there are some projects coming through, and again, they're going to hit you guys early in the year, so.
Looking forward to it. Highway?
Drop in right on the corner of Kennedy 1332 is finally going in, so we are going to get rid of Lake Kennedy apartment to Town Line Road. Other things going on, we dug grinding on the brush that was accumulated over the year up the 420 Hook Road. We're going to have a screener covering it, screen some gravel for the next few years of the brush over material, and then just some drainage and brush work.
And getting ready for the snow.
Yeah, we've had a few soft runs.
Yeah.
That's not a lot of work so far.
Cool. Lance?
Tom says that we can all take a tribe out with trucks, and if we had any mailboxes, don't worry about it.
Don't throw down lice when you have any mailboxes.
As you stated, I have this whole.
Good, please do, please do, we'll call them.
No, I I think as Ron mentioned, I think the solar law, if you guys get a chance, take a look at it. You know, those that, Ron has put a lot of effort into this version, I think he did it the first time, but there's been a lot of good comments, a lot of good input, so I think it's going to be a good product.
Okay, anyone online? You got anybody left online? Nobody left online, nobody left in the room, so it's my turn. Next meeting, we're going to do the training and don't care how many people are here, okay? We're going to get the training out of the way, so we're going to do that one. I also want to take that opportunity to look at the rules and procedures and the MQO D guidelines they were set out to you, let's look at those, let's get it done, so when we do our organizational meeting, it's quick and we get it done early. Maybe we could even tie it in with a regular meeting or something like that. But then we'll approve the rules and procedures and the MQO D rules. We'll also come to look at the solar and have any feedback to the staff on the solar. So that will be our next meeting, it'll be training and review, and then we'll we'll go from there. So with that said, does the board have any other comments or questions or concerns? Okay. How's Myers doing?
All right.
Myers is coming along, they did get their sidewalk along where Citi Road is, even across their driveway that goes on that side of the road. The transformer, they started setting it today. When our genie is done with placing the transformer, they have to run some lines to the building, and they have to run the lines over to our streetlights, and then they come back and energize the transformer. So hopefully, we're saying within a couple weeks, we can have our streetlights on along 97.
Good, and they're going to wash the sun in there too?
I'm going to ask the chairman to sit as part of that at PRC on Friday, but there's going to be some discussion, but they're coming along, I mean, don't get me wrong, they're doing a nice job with the building, plus we just have some bumps along the road.
Town Line Road and the Michigan Road, the project there, obviously they got that in before their 90 days, 180 days expired at the end of November, October, November, because there was no extension, so they did have their paperwork in on that.
All the drawings were signed, I know.
Yep, yes, they had some revised plans that were viewed and we signed it, I think it was a week and a half, two weeks prior to the expiration date. Last thing remaining in order for them to move forward is obviously getting the letter of credit approved and filed and then putting them out for a pre-dead. I believe New York State Department of Health and the ECL have already approved this project as well.
Right, so moving that water and money, hopefully it's something.
Related to that, I talked to Mr. Freeman today on another matter, and he told me that Walt Baker is down in Texas, and I thought he said he had COVID again.
He was so sick last. Oh, man, poor guy. Anybody out there, Eddie?
I, uh, so I drove by buried equipment a couple days ago, I wasn't like you happy. I didn't see any milling files.
What, they're gone?
Yeah. I haven't been by there.
Yeah, they look like.
Yeah, I think they spread them around.
Oh, you think they spread them around there?
Really some of them, I don't know where.
Right, you see, sorry.
Right, right.
I don't know where you see, you know, they spread it around?
Oh, it looked like somewhere in that, um, area, yeah.
I talked to the owner of H Artwork, he's got a pending lawsuit against the town for taking away his water from property.
Well, it shouldn't be us, if he's in the town of Kennedy, it's rising against us.
I didn't say what town.
Okay, and just making sure, because you got enough problems over there, but he's on that line over there.
Anybody else have anything? Motioned here by Adrian, seconded by Aaron, any other comments? All favor?
I.
You guys?